Chris Guzzano filed Tara Brooks and Sidney Bosworth. And Cheryl Brinkman filed for the one-year term on the proposed board. So we have two vacancies.
Cheryl, did you get that letter from?
Yeah.
You said it was supposed to be.
Yeah, it's in front of everybody.
I'm rolling on DVD, so.
So we can go?
Yeah.
Okay. Call me if you're worried.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Our first visitor is behind jet.
Yeah, Mike Shea is breaking in the door.
Coming in the doors. Talk about timing. We didn't have music to change.
Yeah, Mike is here. Mike is, I believe he's the owner of the Moonlight Lady. Obviously, Mike and Captain Stan Walker have been meeting a few times ago. I believe that Captain Walker is owner of the company. So I did email Stan and he was able to locate Mike. So Mike is here to, again, in essence, reiterate their proposal. The other thing, and I did send to Stan, I don't know if Stan forwarded that to you, but I also forwarded to the city council the ordinance that was adopted many, many years ago. I believe that Mayor Dick Adams was the pen on that ordinance. And my guess is that that section of the municipal docks may have gotten forgotten. Anyway, that is the law of the land. And as you can see, relative to reserving dock space down there is totally based on city council approval.
Did you receive a copy of that, the changes?
I did.
You did?
Okay.
Okay, so Mike, go ahead. We'd like to find out where we are. Last time, there were some things in the air. And as far as your plans, what you're gonna do, there was some action played. We're going back to the drawing board, trying to figure out what the game plan was. We do have a schedule. Mel tells me how I should read it, but maybe if you can help. So the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, well, we still want to come back to Vergennes. It's the most beautiful spot on Lake Champlain. Well, it's a tributary to Lake Champlain. Our guests love it. We feel we're part of the history of the lake and the river by bringing commerce to Vergennes. There's a lot there's looking, reading for the quad, who's in there left there. A lot of history coming in here, boats coming up, going way back to the mid 1800s when the reindeer came in here, so many other boats. So I think we're just continuing the tradition. I know that Stan, there was a question about the eateries in town. We came down and investigated two of them. One is right over here. I guess it's a Bercher place. I don't know the name.
Anna Doak?
Yeah. And they, and the one right up here, Black Sheep. Stan talked to the bartender owner over here, and I can't remember who we spoke to up here. And most of our stuff that I know that the concern is a Saturday night, and that's the busiest over at the Dock Marina. Both of these places were busy, and they were a little reluctant to take reservations because we weren't sure to make reservations because what's happened in tourism is two things. Really, since 9/11 and really more the last little bit here with the economy, is tourism is just in time. I mean, we'll get bookings on Thursday and Friday for a Saturday cruise now. We can't predict anymore what's going on. It has become very difficult. People are watching CNN, they're watching the Weather Channel. It's a nice weekend, boom, they're coming to Vermont. It's that good and bad because if they see it's rainy weather, full weather, they're not coming to Vermont. They're not gonna spend their money. They're very careful with money. So we can't really say to any of these restaurants with any power of certainty that we're gonna come there and we're gonna be there with this amount of people because we don't know. It's difficult to make reservations with them, and they kind of, both of those two places kind of agreed. So I don't know how to address that. We do need to have the people fed. Everybody that can walk, and I say that because sometimes we have some seniors that are very immobile. Very few because they have to climb stairs on this boat. It's not a handicapped equipped boat, but some are less mobile than others. But everybody comes uptown here. What we do see is that they are shopping and buying things in town because they're talking to Stan. They're coming back with bags. What's in them? We don't know. We don't ask necessarily. So they are maybe not going to a restaurant, but they are coming up here and shopping. I mean, it's one of the, everybody's trying to get people to spend money in their town. And Burlington would spare the evening hours. We're always watching the synergy between Church Street Marketplace and the waterfront. We're looking to see packages move in that coming down from Church Street. We, as we go into the business association, we can talk about that. So I can understand how important it is here for the local businesses, see our guests coming up here to shop. So Stan assures me that we are seeing that. We made a couple of improvements down there. We upgraded the electricity, we upgraded the cleats down there. Made it what fits our boat, it's a little bit better for some other boats. Stan tells me that might want to use that power. I think that what we do for Vergennes also is we, we're a big part, way we'll get people is through a marketing. And we've been able to put Vergennes, in some ways, I mean, you put yourself in that. We were able to get, I don't see if any of you saw it, when we were, the weekend section of the Boston Globe, we had page two and three, or three and four on the Boston Globe was a story about overnight on the lake. And here's, shows the Moonlight Lady at the Falls. And gave a great story with a lot of pictures. We've been in, this past summer, we were in Vermont Magazine here where they feature a night, the cook, excuse me, the photographer and the writer came down overnight. It was in Vergennes. There's a lot of pictures and writing about Vergennes. So we're drawing some publicity for Vergennes. One thing, one-third of our customers are Vermonters. We're people that, you know, we all live here because we love it here. We're introducing Vergennes to people who kind of are surprised when they discover what Vergennes are, is. And through Stan, I'm being told, Frank Stan is telling me that people say they're gonna come to back to Vergennes. So I think in ways that are outside, I know we've always been this concerned about getting people into your restaurant. We are bringing people back to Vergennes in the form of Vermonters, in form of the advertising, marketing efforts that we do for the tourism sector. And if we all realize here in Vermont, tourism is our number one industry. So I think in a lot of ways, we're helping Vergennes. Small fraction, but part of what makes the whole. So I'd like to ask the city council after reading what Mel sent me, is that we have to petition, or I'm not sure what you'd be looking for, the right to be able to dock there. And we'd be more than happy to present that to you in some form that we can work with Mel if that's the case.
Open up questions from the council.
Could you explain to me this chart?
Sure. You would ask the person who's colorblind, which is a chart that's full of colors. Basically, what it is, if you concentrate on the blue, and I do see how sometimes it looks like the blue kind of fades a little bit, but basically everywhere where you see blue, and maybe if we just look at May 29th as an example, as a good starting point for explanation, you'll notice that the right-hand half of May 22 is blue and the left-hand half of May 23 is blue. And that's because the Moonlight Lady would come to Vergennes about 5:00 or 5:30 on a Saturday. They would stay the night, and then on Sunday morning, I don't know the time, Mike would know the time.
Seven.
Seven o'clock in the morning, they would leave. So that's why, you know, anytime where you see these half-a-day blues, that's what's going on. And typically, their schedule is just as I described it. You know, they come on a Saturday night at 5-ish and leave at seven o'clock in the morning. And then you'll see, you know, in July, on July 8th and 9th, you see a series of blue. And I'm not sure exactly if the boat is coming out of Burlington, but basically, those are in essence nights where they would come here on the 8th, leave the morning of the 9th, come back the evening of the 9th, leave the morning of the 10th, come back the night of the 10th, leave the morning of the 11th, right? And that would be similar when you look down at the end of September. And all of the activity shown here in October is just as I have described it. It's, you know, come in the evening, leave in the morning, come back the following evening.
So everything that he does for Vergennes is just the blue?
Is just the blue. That's correct.
Correct.
All right. One of the things, Mike, you know, basically relative to petitions or whatever, you know, it says on application to the city council, we don't, we don't, we're not big on bureaucracy, but I suppose we could come up with an application form. But basically, you're making a verbal application, if you will, to the city council for permission to, in essence, have the dock reserved pursuant to this, to this schedule here.
Right.
In October, it's all blue. Was that maybe he's gonna?
We're gonna feature it in October because of how beautiful it is, the foliage. And we found the customers are looking for more one-day trips, the leaf peepers. So we're giving that to them. We found last year, and probably any boater here, it's relatively quiet over at that time of the year. A lot of your boaters, you know, they think Labor Day, the lake plucks and closes up. So we're trying, again, on a off-peak time for down there, which is still peak in Vermont, we're bringing people to Vergennes for you. So there's a little trade-off there.
With the left?
We did see a lot more activity at the dock through the better part of September this last year, more so than in past years. And yes, you're right, October just died off, and usually, we start calling docks.
The last time you were here, you made, we asked you about the weekends. And if I remember right, I'm starting to look for my notes, you said it was probably be two to three weeks max on a, two to three weekends max that you would use it. And from what this is doing is that you want to use it every weekend.
Two to three.
Weekends that you would be bringing your boat in. It wouldn't be every weekend. And now, we, looking at this chart, it's every weekend.
Well, you know, I don't want to speak for Mike's business, but maybe to give a little bit of clarification to that. The boat typically serves 16 people. Like a typical full attendance boat is 16 people. And obviously, it's a large boat. You could put 50 people on the boat. But that's what they do is arrange for that. I do know that there's been times where the boat has come to Vergennes with only two people because it was a couple of guys that had booked from Wisconsin, and they were just so excited about the thing that Stan or Mike couldn't bring themselves to say, no, no. And so they brought this 60-foot boat from Burlington to Vergennes with these two people to do that. So the point is, is that their request is to, in essence, reserve the boat, reserve the dock for what you see on here, right? However, if there's weekends that they do not have people, enough people, I should say, or any people, then that would not occur. And what has happened in the past is typically, there's a cell call that comes down to the public works garage that would say, you know, we're on our way, or we're not on our way, don't put the signs out. So that's how it has been coordinated in the past. So their request is consistent with this calendar. They're looking for the capability to reserve every weekend that you see there in blue. But I think what Stan may have been leading to do is that, you know, that'd be, they would love to have that, but that typically isn't, isn't how it works. Mike, one of the things, I don't know how to more diplomatically say this because I, I'm gonna use, I want to make sure that the city council has good information, all right, when they make their decisions. And I know that you get your, you know, you speak to Stan, I speak to Stan, you know, and I just want to let you know that obviously, the feeling, the concern, if you will, or the wonder by the city council is, you know, that if the people don't get off the boats, you get off the boat, and you know, they're taking about that valuable dock space, and you lose people. And so the effort was tried to be able to, you know, see if there's a way that those meals wouldn't be served and they would come up to our restaurants. And in my, in my talking to Stan, you know, he felt that Black Sheep Bistro or Bar Antidote would be places that they would see, would fit in to their clientele, you know, they aren't, you know, takeout places. I love pizza, but you know, some people, if they're taking a boat ride to Vergennes, it's not pizza night, all right? So those two restaurants were the ones that they focused on. And it's my understanding from Stan, and again, this is the thing where you're getting information third-hand in here. It's my understanding from Stan that according to Black Sheep Bistro, that they would need to have, you know, at least two weeks advance notice to consider reserving tables, all right? That doesn't work, that just doesn't work with the Moonlight Lady, okay? Now, Stan says, Stan tells Mike that he spoke to the owner or co-owner at Black Sheep Bistro. I'm not saying he didn't do that. I don't know who he talked to. I don't know what he said, but I know what I did. I went to Black, I went to Bar Antidote, and I spoke to Harper, Ian, Gordana, and Sylvia, all right? So I talked to the head players at Bar Antidote and talked to them specifically about the Moonlight Lady and asked them if they could accommodate 16 people with only three or four nights' notice. And the answer, and the answer was yes, that they could. And none of them recalled ever talking to Stan. Now, I mean, I know Stan. I just, I don't know what he said, you know, or who he talked to, but that was my discussion with Harper. And it's very possible that if Harper and Stan saw one another, you know, Harper might say, oh, I do remember that guy coming to see me. I, he didn't describe the Moonlight Lady. He talked about, I just don't have any idea. All I'm telling you is I went down and talked to Harper, and he checked with others, and he felt that he could accommodate that many people with three or four, with three or four days' notice. And the other, the other thing, Mike, I try very hard not to offend people. And I'll tell you, I love hamburgers at Bar Antidote, but they have a full menu. It's not, it's not a burger joint. It's, they have a nice menu there.
Yes.
Michael, I went, I went on to just Moonlight Lady's website. And on their advertisement for the Champagne Sunset Cruise, it says, "We dine in overnight at the Falls in Vergennes." And the champagne sunset is the orange. So according to their schedule, they're coming on the blues and the oranges.
Very good point, Chris. I didn't, and thank you for bringing that up. Mike, can you speak to that? Hang on. You're right. It does.
And it advertises that one lunch and two dinners are on that cruise.
Yep, she's right. Are you serving food on the boat?
I'm sorry?
Are you gonna continue to serve food on the boat?
We have to.
Okay.
I mean, are you saying, are we gonna serve food while we're in?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, originally, we were told that that, most likely, at the previous meeting, we were told that that food wasn't to be served on a boat because you were looking at ways to cut costs. And that was my understanding, that that was possibly gonna be done away with, or was done away with, so.
We, at that time, we were, we were, we were trying to save the business. We've had, it's been a belly flop for two years now. We ran into the tsunami of an economy here, which is a high-end product, and we just, it's been a financial disaster. So yes, we were looking for ways. We might have been talking like, if this was the way we were thinking, but we are gonna serve the meals. We're just gonna change how we purchase the food and who serves the food, or to cut costs. I thought this trip had been redirected. I thought, I've been in Russia for quite a while here, and I guess why I'm late, was just talking to Russia. And I thought this was, was going down to Willthorpe this year.
Okay, well, so what is, you thought, and what is posted? So what is posted is the 2010 schedule, so.
If it says it's going here, it's coming here.
Okay.
So I mean, I stand corrected.
You are colored blind, Mel?
I'm not that, I'm not that colorblind.
You're not that colorblind. Okay. Very good point, Chris.
Seventeen, eighteen more times. But a lot of that, we'll get that.
It's definitely over. I have some definite concerns for many reasons. You know, you say, we say, we hear. I get around, a lot of people talk to me, and they tell me point-blank, they live right in the vicinity. They don't see a lot of people getting off the boat, so. And I'm not gonna call anybody a liar. That is not in my nature.
We don't have any people.
No, no. I mean, the people that come on the boat don't get off the boat. They stay on, they stay on the vessel. But I also have some concerns about the schedule because we have some of our own events that are, it's getting crowded. We have LCI that brings in a lot of money into Vergennes. We have our local fishing, junior fishing derby, which is designed for the kids. And the more we pack at the dock, I want to try to coexist with the boating industry. I do not want to lock them out. But we get, quote me if I'm wrong, almost 300 kids down on those docks. And it's, it's, it almost gets to a point of getting dangerous, getting caught with a hook or something. So there's some other events that are happening, and we might be adding a few this year. We may announce those a little bit later as we put some acts together. But I just, it's, you know, if we're businessmen, we're, you know, it's a hell of a thing to be swamped with business. We just love that. But we just gotta figure out how we can, we can manage it and satisfy everybody's needs here. We definitely would have to address part of the issue with the ordinance because it is very clear there's some ordinance. And I don't like breaking rules or making exceptions to things. If the ordinance doesn't fit, then, and we're gonna do something, we need to change it. But one of the things that we, why we did it is to protect ourselves against local people, no offense to the locals, from just tying up their 24/7, 365. It is to help get businesses or people up the street to see merchants. And somebody just parking their boat there for a place to moor it is not the answer. So that area is gonna have to be massaged somehow and fixed.
Well, the, I mean, number five is where it does grant the city council the authority. Let's grant the city council the authority.
I just, I guess I have a real problem with.
You know, nobody seems to have any real idea about whether or not people get off, you know? We on the council say, well, we don't, we're not sure. And the owner says, well, the captain says he thinks they are. And I, I mean, it's just, I'm uncomfortable making them just, you know, I, personally, I really feel like this is great exposure for the city. I mean, that's my sense.
Agreed.
And to get people here that have never been here before or potential for repeat business. I mean, restaurants aren't the only businesses in town. Jim claims that they're making purchases at other businesses, and that's a very valuable thing. And I guess I'm uncomfortable saying, well, you know, we're just not, we're not sure whether people are getting off or not, you know? So nobody seems to know. And so I don't think we should make a decision based on hearsay, I guess. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'll make that proof, but my, but my sense is that this is a good thing for the city, to increase the exposure to our businesses and to our city.
Randy, did you?
Yeah, I have a thought.
Did you?
And looking at this, all these blue areas that are blocked off, you're coming in at 5:30 at night?
Correct.
Okay. Most of the stores close uptown at 5:00. And I mean, there's, then basically, there's just restaurants that are open. I mean, Tim may stay open a little later than that. And I hate to be one of those people, what have you done for me lately, you know? But also have to look out for the city's residents too and the other boaters. And I mean, that's a 60-foot boat for 16 people. I would like to see hard numbers and what, as Joe said, people coming off that boat and actually coming up into the community.
I just want a clarification.
Then David after.
Of the orange, Christine. I just want to know, again, what that means as it relates to the, our dock. It says three days and two nights. That part I understand, but is it really two nights? I'm getting to that. Okay. It means the first night, we're here. Okay. Okay, so like on, take May 20, May 23rd, all right? May 23rd, yes, you're here on May 23rd. For all practical purposes, the first half of that orange slip, if it was blue, we would know that they're here, all right? So you're not here on May 24th?
Correct.
Okay, so it's just the first half of any, in essence, it's the first half of any orange slip. If you have, because this is, let me answer two things. We carried 174 people all of last year. So when you say, looking for people to come into town, probably out of all of that, maybe 100 came to Vergennes because we went to Montreal a few times, we went to Quebec City, we went to some other places too. We only carried 174 total people. So it's not a rush that anybody would see. I don't know if we could ever have any sort of way of measuring it real accurately. That was, I'm sorry, that wasn't exactly my, my point. My point was, nobody really seems to know one way or another. And I don't want data, you know, I guess. It's not a tremendous amount of people. Right. And aren't we already extending the dock? The plan is to build another 50 feet of docks on the.
On the opposite side.
Waste from the treatment side. One thing we could do, since we're in the infancy of the schedule, if you have specific days you really don't want us here or we're in the way, because I know you have some community days, let us know what they are, and we'll change the schedule and go away.
David?
I think everybody would agree that that basin is a tremendous resource to the city, economic and otherwise. Basically, what we have now is we have a system that functions rela, basically by default. Boaters come up the. Boaters come up the river, and if there's dockage available, there's dockage available, um, and if there's not dockage available, they either raft up with someone, they anchor in the channel, or they head back out and head elsewhere. I'm not sure we're really in a position to reserve anything at this point, um, because we really, um, as, as has been mentioned, we really don't have any idea of, of what the impact is, either negative or positive. We have pretty good anecdotal information, um, I spent a better part of my life on that main street. Michael's brother does, and has done for years, a pretty good job of keeping track of the number of boaters that, uh, that tie up at the docks. Our job as council members is really to maximize the, um, the economic benefit of that resource, or any other resource, in the city of Virgens. Is this a good thing for the city of Virgens? Possibly. Is it a good thing for boaters from Montreal to come down and tie up? Possibly, I mean, anybody, you know, we, we don't, we don't really know. It's, neither one is certainly a, a negative, um, but, you know, one of the things that does occur to me is, is that, when we get into the realm of reserving, um, dock space, there's questions of fairness that come into play. There's questions of time and resources that are allocated on the part of the city to do that, there's logistical issues in that somebody who is tied up and public work shows up, and they're asked to move, I know we've had that issue before, um, I, I, I don't know. I think that we're probably a long ways off, um, of having a harbor master, or anything like that. But I just think there's a lot of unanswered questions that, uh, that, that need to be addressed.
We get calls in our office almost every day, all summer long, is there dock spaces, is there dock space? And we tell them, we can't even see the water from here, we don't know, you just have to come up, and if, if they're all booked up, you just hook on with someone, or anchor, or like David said, leave, you know, it's, but we get tons of calls, they're all on cell phones, you know? We're just, some map book that's out or something, gives the city hall number to call for reservations, and we tell them we don't need that.
Based on my brother's information, majority of times, they all stay.
Yeah.
They find a place, because it, it's an overnight hook, you know, they can, they can live out in the channel, like you say, or they, boating community is very friendly, and they meet new friends, that's why you're there, you're on the lake to meet new people, and, uh, they do that, so. Where do we go from here, people? We need to give this some thought, this does not have to be settled tonight. Ice might be gone out of the river right now, that's due to a little thaw, it'll be back. That's not a promise, either.
I, I, I don't think that we, we can commit to this here.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not comfortable committing to, um, you know, what essentially is going to tie up that amount of dockage, for a good part of the boating season, um, can we do something? Possibly, um, but I, I can't agree to this.
Is there any reason you can't, um, anchor out in the basin?
We can, but we have, we need power, and we have a, we, we get into some Coast Guard, like, we have a, it's called a Certificate of Inspection, we're a US documented vessel, and, um, the way that it's written, we have to be at a dock within twelve hours, or we have to get into this whole, we have to get a whole other crew, like, if we had to be on a hook at night, we'd have to have a whole other captain, engineer, and three deckhands to be, and five more people would have to be on that boat, because of, it's a watch, and as long as we get to a dock within twelve hours, we don't need that second crew. So, it's a little bit of a crewing situation, is why we have to be at the dock.
Good point.
Joe? Does this schedule represent an increase in the number of visits, or decrease, or the same number of visits as the last couple? How many, how many years is it?
Probably the same, probably the same.
And is this, has it created a problem, or is it just, I mean, I'm not sure why it's?
It, it, it has, uh, it's, I don't know if you'd really say, yeah, it's kind of created an issue of concerns.
Space is the biggest issue?
Space is, is, is part of the big, biggest issue.
And then the, the fact that we're not sure whether or not our businesses are benefiting is the secondary issue?
Is, is partial, there, there is some, you know, it's got to benefit, but.
I'll, I'll tell you the business that benefits the most from the boater traffic is probably Virgens Wine, and the close second in Small City Market, those, those are the two businesses that primarily benefit from the, um, the boater, the regular boater traffic. Next is the restaurants, and a distant third is any other retail merchant, such as myself.
Randy?
I guess my concern is, is that we're allowing, potentially allowing, a boat to dock there and use our services. I know you've upgraded, you've put some of your own finances into upgrading, look, the dock to cleats and power down there, but the power is still on the taxpayer bill, right?
That's correct.
It, it's, you know, the other question being that, and, you know, some of us have had this discussion, that, um, you know, should we be charging for dockage? I mean, this, this is, it's, you know, the best kept secret on Lake Champlain, it's one of the few places where you can tie up to a dock and not pay some sort of a fee, granted, we don't have a pump-out station, we don't have fuel, we don't have a, a, a lot of the other amenities that, that, um, that some of the commercial areas have, um, but it doesn't cost anybody a dime. It, it does cost the city, you know, there's the cost involved in putting the docks out, there's maintenance, and there's electricity and water, and so on and so forth, and, and so the, the discussion may occur at some point, you know, do we start charging? You know, and, and it certainly is relevant in regards to a for-profit entity, um, but again, you run into other issues when you start collecting a fee, you know, so, I do, there, there's a lot of work to do on this.
I, uh, just, last year in particular, I, I spent more time down at the dock, just the activity, to kind of get a sense of how things were going, if they were enjoying our light show that we're putting on at the falls, of which we'll talk a little bit about later, um, and, uh, I would say at least three of the boats that I went on were really expensive boats, I mean, we're talking into millions of dollars, and they were saying, why aren't you charging a fee, even if, if it's a voluntary system? So, and, and, so, that, that thought is there, and they're willing, you know, uh, even if it was an nominal fee and the way to do it, but that, that's a, another time, another place, another discussion as to whether we go there, because, uh, we could only improve, uh, we could only, if, if we had a income, direct income to the city, to, uh, we could definitely do a lot more than what we're doing. It's, it's, this, the economy is having some impact, Mike?
Me, Dan and I have talked, and we were willing to, um, we, we're gonna understand that, and appreciate it, and, uh, what we were willing to do was to give twenty-five dollars, uh, for every time we docked in, five dollars for each passenger. It's some way to contribute to the electricity, um, and, uh, we know that you've been talking about additional docks, I mean, that's, it's gonna take a few years to get the money you're gonna need for that, I mean, how much docks cost? Uh, very expensive, but we're willing to, uh, you know, without having you come to us, us come to you instead, pay what we feel is, uh, fair, uh, probably, I mean, something to, to show that we, we're making money, I mean, we're not making money, trying to make money, but willing to contribute.
Joe?
I just wonder if we could make a motion to perhaps ask the, uh, the office, Mel's office, to provide, um, provide them with a calendar of weekends and nights that we'd prefer that they not be here, Virgens, uh, the fishing derby, et cetera, rework the schedule, and then come back before the council for a decision, is that appropriate?
I have a motion, can I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Randy has a second, uh, now we'll open it for discussion.
I think before we do that, we're gonna have a general discussion, uh, as it relates to policy.
Oh, the policy's right here, David, according to this.
Policy is right here, but I'm, I'm not hearing anything in this discussion that's particularly clear one way or the other, I mean, it's a significant departure, and I'm not saying that we don't do it, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, but I, I think that to have a discussion about particular days is a little premature, given that, that doesn't necessarily address any of the other particular issues that have been brought up tonight.
I'm not happy of this thing being tied up every weekend here.
That's why I'm asking for a clarified schedule.
Well, it doesn't even go with the schedule, I just, I think other people coming in, you know, they, that, like, the Canadians, or wherever they come from, that they ought to be able to use this dock on some weekends themselves.
Mike and Mel have indicated that that has not really been an issue.
Well, I've been down here in July, I've been down there several times with my grandchildren this last, in July and first week of August, to, and watched this, and it, it was some issues sometimes, in fact, it was twice I seen boats turn around and leave, and they were good-sized boats, but that's because they couldn't be over, where they, to be out there, they didn't have enough, um, for parking, they didn't have enough depth for both their boats, so they backed out, turned around, and headed back down the falls, or down the river.
I, I, I do know that, you know, they use Matt stocks all the time, he's, has people stopping. There isn't a weekend that he isn't, he hasn't got a, a boat on it, or isn't matter, almost a, almost a, almost isn't an evening that he doesn't have somebody on there, so, and, and we're trying to relieve some of that.
One of the things, you know, I, I really love it when I, when I find some thirty-year-old ordinance, you know, that somebody put together, and typically ordinances get written because there was a problem, and I do remember what the problem was that, that drove Dick Adams to write this ordinance, and, and I don't wanna say anything more about, about that, uh, but there is one less boat on the planet, let me, let me just say that. Item, uh, item four, you know, obviously, when I read this, you can see here that, that really, we, when I mean we, uh, which is, which is me, and, and you too, Mike, that, uh, that really, when there is, when there is the Junior Fishing Derby, and when there is the Basin Bash and all that type of thing, that events calendar, which is in front of you, uh, that really requires action of the city council, and so, to me, the city council should be acting on, in essence, its schedule related to four, alright? Right out of the gate, do that before Moonlight Lady even shows up, so we definitely need to do that, uh, anyway. And then item five is really trying to figure out what was in Dick Adams's head, uh, as to what, you know, I, uh, is, is this what Dick Adams was contemplating, or something considerably less, and, you know, that discussion hasn't been had in twenty-five years, alright? So, I, there's absolutely no problem, Joe, I think, you know, uh, in, for, for us to do that, half of that work we should be doing anyway, and the other half to, to attempt to, to work with them, um, to come back with a, uh, a very specific proposal that the board can act on.
And that's fine, I, I wasn't trying to, I was just trying to move the discussion along more than anything else.
And we appreciate that.
Um, so I don't know if I need to withdraw my motion, or, or what do you think the appropriate way to proceed, okay?
I don't, I don't look out with the motion.
Okay.
We can either act on the motion and, and let it fail, or, um, we can withdraw it, so, I just, I wanna, I wanna just keep this conversation going just a little bit longer, uh, to, uh, see where, where we're really headed, I understand, I understand, David does have some valid points there, but, but I think there's, there's a, again, can you just repeat your motion so that, um, we can make sure that it, it, it either fits or doesn't, don't, can you, read it?
Yeah, the gist of it, um.
And he'll clarify if you don't.
The city office personnel prepare a worksheet indicating dates, we would not be willing to allow them to use the basin, to dock it.
And then, um.
Get it to them.
Yeah.
Come back with a, come back with another, a specific proposal, right? They would come back.
They would come back with a specific proposal.
Would that be more in line with, and give us some time?
Yeah, I don't have an issue.
We've got, we've got until.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have.
We all damn least will respond because of being able to publicize a schedule out to the public and advertise, and that's, that's only fair, so.
I don't have an issue with us providing specific days that, that we, we would definitely want, um, to not have the space reserved, but what I wanna try to avoid in that discussion is any lack of clarity, which, um, is, is part of the issue that occurred the, the first go-round when this, um, this whole thing started, I, I just wanna make sure that everybody's clear, and, and that that's not necessarily an anticipation, or, or to be construed as any, any sort of approval, um, and that I do think that, uh, along with that, we also need to have a very specific discussion with regard to policy, um, as, as relates to reserving dockage.
Um, then what we, just a minute, Ziggy, uh, what we're probably gonna have to do is, is form a, a committee to, uh, review this section of the, uh, of the municipal docks, to, uh, come up with what we need for, for verbiage, and we need to do it in a fairly timely manner, um, I would think that, uh, we would want that at least by, uh, 'cause we're, our first meeting in March is our, our city meeting, we'd have to have it by the, the second, uh, meeting in, in March, if that, please, could you think we could make that? Ziggy?
That sounds good, but the only thing with that is that nobody else would be able to be there also at that same time, correct? Because we're gonna need to use that.
Um, you mean, you mean, no, that's, that's, that's the verbiage, I, I don't, I don't see how we're gonna, no, I don't think you can, I think there has to be, again, that's gonna have to be part of the verbiage, but, my own personal opinion, you've gotta be able to coexist somehow, so you gotta be careful on your words.
Well, that's why I'm asking that, because if we're saying that certain times the dock cannot be used, because we have certain events that we're gonna be doing.
It says all or a portion, Zig, the, under four, it says, the city council shall have the right to close or restrict public use of all or any portion of the municipal dock, so it's very possible that for the fishing derby, you know, the city council, you know, says that this much is reserved, and no boats are allowed to, to park there.
And, and there is an issue that we need to address at some point before this coming, uh, derby, because we have a situation that happened last year that was totally unacceptable, and I'm still waiting, uh, to see where that's gonna go, because I'm not happy with that, um, nobody knows, well, there's a little doubt, but you will when the time is right. So, uh, let's, let's act on Joe's, on Joe's, uh, motion with Randy's second, um, and then we'll go. So, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So carry, so Stan, or, excuse me, uh, Mike, what we're gonna do is, Mel and some combination of the office is gonna put together a list of preferred not-to-come-to-Virgens dates, and, uh, from there, we'll try to get that to you in a timely manner, but meanwhile, we're going to establish a, uh, committee to talk about the ordinances and, and take care of some, some old business that needs some clarification, so, and I ask for volunteers, and I want to volunteer David to be on that.
Fair enough.
Okay? Lowell? Joe?
Sure.
I think I got a good mix.
Yeah, it's a good mix.
Okay?
We caused any problem just talking about some problem last year at the fishing. Have we caused a problem?
Well, you're new, and in past years, people have done certain things on certain dates. LCI, they've gone down and occupied the dock, and you guys pulled in and took their, their claim to LCI fishing off the end of the dock, so that kind of...
Oh, the Kidster?
No. LCI, another issue. Okay?
Sign?
Uh? Your, your signs were there to reserve, but those guys have done that for how many years, Mel? They, they claim? Well, it was a number of years that they've done that. They've kinda camped out there, which is, is another thing that we want to address in there, whether we allow camping at the city dock, probably when we're covering this year. But I don't know if it's a problem, it's probably more one of inconvenience, okay? So, a, a, and again, it's just...
I, I don't think it was not, it was not your, it was not a problem of your boat. I think it was one of the things that we, we, you know, now that we see this ordinance, we, we really could have cleared that up in advance of the fishing derby, for sure. What, and what was, there had been issues of cohabitation for the fishing derby in the past that I was made aware of, and I made, I made, I made it very clear to the members of the fishing derby committee that the fishing derby folks needed to cohabitate with the, with the boaters. And so that message was very clear, but there were, there was an incident or two that, that that didn't quite work out, that, you know, I mean, cohabitation obviously requires cooperation, and, and there was an incident that was, that there clearly was not cooperation, and so therefore, if, if we can't do it that way, then we end up unfortunately having to dictate exactly what the rules are, and it's crystal clear. If people can't cohabitate and cooperate, then, then we make the rules for them, and that's it. So it wasn't you, it wasn't...
Cohabitate with you. So if you tell us the days you don't want us, we'll go. We'll go somewhere, I mean, it's a big lake, but I mean, this is the most special part of the lake right here. So you just tell us, and we, we won't be in your way. We didn't know about, we didn't know all your town days. You just tell us, and we're gone. That way it won't create a problem. We'll just avoid it.
Sounds good? Okay? Thank you. Joe, I'll, I'll give your name and the number after, and if you'd like, you call and...
Okay.
Do some of your own soliciting. I think that'd be very inspiring information.
Okay.
About the boat and people getting on or off.
Okay.
Okay. We're, we're gonna go right into public comment. Mr. Neal, welcome back. Haven't seen you for a month or two.
Busy, busy.
That's good.
I have great news.
Oh, he's carrying papers too?
I've got paper, which I'm gonna put over here and ask the, the, so here's the deal. Is we, I haven't actually got anything, if you're interested. These are policies. You may recall back in September that the council adopted a, a new city plan, right? And I'm happy to report that in December, regional planning said, yep, that's, that's good, and they adopted it too. So now we, we have a plan. And so what I did was kinda go through it and realized that it's full of policies that require implementation of one sort or another. So in the interest of being clear about, you know, what it is that we're supposed to be doing, I made a little spreadsheet, and I can distribute this electronically, and we can sort it nine ways at Sunday and that sort of thing. Here's the thing about policies, is that some of them are really vague and don't require any sort of immediate action, right? And some are real specific. This X, Y, and Z should happen. I would give you an example on, on page three, right? Down, down towards the bottom, number thirty-eight, right? Conduct routine maintenance and make improvements the city hall has needed to observe our city's investments in this valued piece of history. This is a good policy, right? I, I mean, it's, it's hard to, we can all get behind that, there's something we all agree on, but it doesn't require us to go out and actually do anything today or tomorrow or the next day, right? On that same page, up number twenty-six, under economy, it's a little more specific. Create an economic development committee, make up of city council members, planning commission members, and business owners to develop a clear vision and strategy with regard to economic development within one year of plan adoption. That's kinda specific, right? And anyways, what I did was I went through and created two columns to the right of sort of who's responsible for these things. And there's a bunch of things that are responsible clearly by the planning commission, that have to do with zoning regulations and this sort of thing, and there's other stuff that in, are the planning commission's opinion that fall more into the city council's responsible sort of agenda. This is not anything that's set in stone, right? It's just some ideas that I put down. And then over to the right, sort of, how, how do these things get implemented? Under implementation, there's a, a city staff sort of piece, and some of the city staff might be Mel, some of it might be the fire chief in terms of making sure that the fire equipment is all taken care of and this sort of detail. Zoning regulations, obviously, there's some stuff in there that have to do with zoning regulations in terms of the Northern Gate, Gateway District, downtown criteria that we had spoken of, and historic neighborhoods, there's some very definite zoning regulations that the plan considers changing. There's also, I, I put a column here that says subcommittees, acknowledging that we, as both the city council and the planning commission, don't have enough time in the day to do all these things, and we shouldn't. All these policies are not meant to, you know, in a year, we start checking them all off and they're all done. These are all conceptual, but we ought to invite other folks into this discussion, in my opinion. And I would suggest that there is room to have some subcommittees established, and some of them already exist. For instance, energy, there's already an energy committee, and the plan has some policies with regards to energy that it suggests. Some of the downtown revitalization or economic development pieces, we have a downtown partnership, right? There, there are some of those committees that are established already. I would suggest that some other ones that we might consider, recreation, solid waste recycling issues, historical preservation pieces, and natural resources, which the plan conceptualizes a conservation commission. There's a lot of details here. Who these people report to, what we want those folks to do. I'm just kinda laying out the broad framework here. There's a bunch of pieces. With respect to the zoning regulation piece and the, for the planning commission's part of it, as I've mentioned before, we very much would like to engage with a consultant again to help us with three specific pieces. The Northern Gateway District, it's a new district. The Historic Neighborhood District, it's a new district. And then the, those regulations for the Central Business District that were about the look and feel and that kind of thing. Those are some pretty big chunks of work, in terms of writing language for brand-new districts. I would suggest that we really want the assistance of a consultant to help us gather input from townspeople and our citizens about what those pieces ought to look like when we get down into the details, and kinda help them manage that process forward. It's legal language that at the end of the day, we need to come up with, and we're, we're, you know, like y'all, we're just average, you know, Joe citizens. So that looks like it's gonna have a price tag, somewhere in the neighborhood of $5,000. As I've said, the state has pulled back on those grants, so it's something that we are hopefully gonna come to for and look, look for. That's what I have to say about that. What do you think?
Looks like somebody got out the burns at Midday Oil.
What I, what I like about the list, you know, I know that when, when, when the new council started in the springtime, Mike has oftentimes asked folks to kinda come up with some goals and this kind of thing, and, I mean, I would suggest that there's pieces here for folks to really attach onto, that we as a community have said, these are the pieces that are important, this is where we want to see, or, or the direction go. And now really what we need is people to attach on to one or two and say, yep, I'll be the hero for this, I'll be the person that, that moves this one forward. So anyways, I've got mine blocked off on a planning commission column, so I would, I would encourage you to, to think about that. Alright?
You're good. Any questions of Neil?
Thanks, guys.
If not, thanks, Neil. You guys are doing a great job. Really appreciate it. The warrants have gone around, those have been signed. Now we'll move for approval of the minutes. Just the, just the one copy. You got two copies, it's at the same minute. Just the Virginia City Council Meeting, January twelfth, two thousand and ten.
Same motion.
I heard Randy, I didn't, I heard somebody else, but we... Chris? Chris will second it then. Corrections, mission errors? Bearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carried? Want to talk a little bit about budget, or Mr. Mel?
You know, I'm happy to answer any questions. Christine certainly had, had one as soon, as soon as she saw the budget, because it was a line item whereby we had spent $454,000 out of the Public Works, or, excuse me, the Fire Truck Replacement Fund, and she knew that the voters had only authorized 450, and she also knew that we were only spending 400. So that one jumped off the page for Christine. But anyway, just to what I explained to Christine, I think she's happy now after I gave her the explanation. The way that we're handling the finances for the fire trucks is that the, the Fire Department has a, a Fire Truck Replacement Fund that had, I'm gonna say, $119,000 in it at year end. There was an additional $25,000 allocated out of the current budget. The voters have authorized 450, of which we, we will only be using 400. So you add the 400 to the 25 to the 119, and that should equal some $544,000, if, if my math is correct. We don't intend to spend $544,000, but there'll be obviously a huge dent in that, in that the two trucks that we purchased is $400,000. The truck that we are retrofitting, renovating, you know, the Public Works truck that is at, that is at VTAC, that's gonna, you know, run some, you know, 120 to 130,000 dollars. So basically, we're, we're spending 400 plus the, plus the 130, which will, you know, not leave a heck of a lot of money in that replacement fund. So I suppose we could have, one of the things that, when you all authorized the $400,000 short-term note with the merchant bank, we could have just immediately called on that money and brought it here and, and used that money. But we don't, we don't earn that kind of interest on our money, and so what we've been doing is just been using existing cash flow to pay for these trucks. However, when we do get into May or June, we, we will need to call on that, we will need to call on that money and set that, set that note up. So you will see, the other truck, you will see that 454 grow, because there still is additional expenses related to the, the new hose reel truck. So we've just buried all of, all of the fire trucks, expenses are all being funneled through that fire truck replacement account. We don't, we are not separating the bond money from the non-mon money. Other than that call as yet, I, I, to be very honest with you, I have not had a time to review this budget, because our office has been absolutely focused on getting the, and a report to the printers tomorrow. So I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I have not done a line-by-line review of this, of this budget, and I, and I won't do so until, until the end of the week.
I have another meeting in a couple weeks, so people could hold their questions, and on the budget then, we'll, we'll move on to the committee report. Lowell doesn't have anything?
I don't have anything to report, but I see there's this letter that's been included. I'm, I'm gonna have a chance to look at it, or glanced at it. Letter from the district.
Noel, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, you know what, I guess what I, I mean, obviously, this is item six. Do you want to just go around the table and then jump right, jump right back to that one?
We'll come back to that one, okay? Did, did you want to just touch base on, I know it's not an agenda item, it's not really a committee, but Joe and I attended a meeting last night about the NISAC versus the new way of life at Virginia Junior High School.
Well, there was a public meeting last night that the principal held to sort of inform the public about his decision or his recommendation to pull out of this New England Association of Schools and Colleges. Basically, the principal, Mr. Webly, as far as I understand, had three reasons. One is that they don't, they just don't physically have the time for the self-assessment. Second one is that during the last go-round, he didn't feel like he, the, the, NISAC or whatever it was, yeah, was, can't pronounce it properly, was very responsive to his queries, and they didn't get a value out of the money and the time that they spent. And the third reason is that they have these already, these self-governing kind of programs going, and they feel, felt like they didn't need an independent accrediting body. And there was, there was a number, there's a number of school board members there, some community members, Mike and myself, and there's a pretty active discussion. I'm not sure really if there's any decisions, certainly didn't think there were any decisions made or anything.
No, basically, we were supposed to go for an hour, and we went for about an hour and forty minutes. We heard Ed's side, the other people weren't there, so some of the questions couldn't be answered on the...
Or be asked, or asked people there.
Yes, nobody there really, that was pointed out a couple different times. And yes, the boards, the board did state that there is ano, there is another meeting on February eighth. I don't know the time, I'll send that out once I get the schedule. And at that meeting, Ed and Peter, the principal and the two principals, will make the recommendation to the board not to go with that particular method and go with their, their style. There was a lot of good stuff about what they're doing. I mean, it's, it's very timely. And the board will also hear comments from the public at that time again, before they do their final vote as to whether they...
There was, there was some high school staff members there that had participated in the process in the past that were very supportive of it.
And a few not.
And a few not, yeah.
So it was both, both ways.
Right.
So, okay, very good. Dave? Okay, oh, I, I was good, but I remember we're on camera, I better not say that. Nothing to report, huh? Okay, Randy?
I actually did pay a visit to the seniors today, for, and talked, chatted with them for a few minutes with a Tracy Jerome?
Jerome, yep.
And I'm gonna be put in there when they have their next big lunching, which is gonna be February eighteenth. I'm gonna go and speak to the seniors about several things, so if you have any agenda things that you'd like to have brought up to them, I'm gonna be there and have a few minutes to talk to them before lunch. I'm gonna talk about the snow shoveling, and then if there's any other issues. I know I was queried about more oil and chemical housing, and if there's anything we could do beyond what we're doing already.
We've, that's gonna be part of Mel's report here, a few minutes, so...
So good, some more stuff to report.
On the project you're talking about?
Yeah.
Let's see, how's it show?
Yeah, well, they wanted, they were talking about the first twenty-five units, but they said, is there gonna be more additional units put in also?
David? Report. Chris?
I, after last meeting, I emailed Rhonda, and I asked her, if you may recall, we had put a, we're gonna try to put a grant request in to get a, a debit card machine, a point-of-sale machine for their debt, EBT cards, and for anybody to use a debit card at a farmer's market, and because they, the federal registration for their IRS number took longer than anticipated, she did not get it in in time. They are... They are, the market is already looking to do more marketing through Facebook and signage. They're working on that. And there were several area residents who were meeting sometime last week to discuss a winter market. She's out of the country, and when she gets back, she hopes to, she has more people interested in joining the farmer's market. So I think it'll be a better year.
Yes, hopefully. Okay. I'm just trying to throw something out at this point. I'd like to mention to the council that I'm, once we get into March, I'm gonna be looking for one of you to become a member of the energy committee and be more, play a more active role. Diane is extremely busy in her job, and I just, I'd like to see this continue to grow. It's just kinda, at this point, leveled out, and I think it needs some fresh ideas and new faces. And I think with the right council person on it, I think it could go some places. Mel? Well, okay, that completes that, whole business. Update, the appeal, nothing to report. Virgin Graded School disposition, Mel?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is, I would like everybody to come with me to this aerial photo. And I wanna make sure the camera is okay, so that he's not blocking.
Or you want us to get us up so we don't catch frostbite?
Just wanna make sure that she's okay. I know, obviously, there's a letter that came in to you, and there was an attached survey. And for some of us looking at surveys, you know, we know the lay of the land, but to me, it's, I think it's easier for people to read surveys when they're done with an overlay of an aerial photo, so you can really get a handle on the property, who owns what, and what is being proposed here. So I just wanted to go over this parcel mapping that we have over this aerial photo and just explain to you exactly who owns what relative to the schools. Obviously, the Virgin's Elementary School is located here. It's comprised of about 14 acres. It's one of Virgin's most oddly shaped lots. It looks like this. Here, wrapping around the recreation facilities. The high school property, high school here, obviously, this is, this photo was taken long before the addition, so what's on the ground is considerably different to that. But what the high school purchased originally back in 1959 is this parcel here. And apparently, there had to have been, I'm assuming that there was some discussion with the high school board and the Virgin's Graded School District Board relative to the use of this property here. When the Virgin's Elementary School was originally established back in 1939, it actually purchased two pieces of property. It purchased a piece of property that looked something like this, and then it purchased an additional piece of property that looked something like this. And when I say purchase, I have no idea whether or not they paid any money at all. It's very possible that two property owners in Virgin's donated land to Virgin's Graded School District, or they sold land to Virgin's Graded School District. I don't have any idea. But they did acquire their property for this back in, back in the 30s in two parcels. Obviously, then in 1978 is this 8.13 acre parcel here that does have some frontage on the Haven Road that we've talked about. And when the union, so in essence, in 1978, the Virgin's Graded School District, prior to the Virgin's Union Elementary School being formed, owned this piece of land here. Sold this to the Union Elementary, retaining this, this, and this. And although it's not mentioned in their, in their letter, the Graded School District during their, in their dissolution is that in light of the fact that the high school is using, I'm gonna say, all of the usable land. I mean, this is really a wetland topographical difficulty here. So their plan is to convey this land here that the high school has already been using to the high school. And the proposal that is in front of you and been on your plate for some time, which has been clarified now, would be for the Graded School District to convey two pieces of land. One, this piece of land here encompassing the recreation facilities and the 8.13 acre parcel over here.
What is the geography like in this parcel?
Randy, can I be helped? I was born, I was brought up on Haven Road. It's a little flat, it's a little bit flat here, but then it...
Then grades off and grades off down into the...
If you follow this back through here, that's the stream that goes down through there and back to a pond over here. Yeah, it does kinda slant down. These are kinda trails that either barments or people have made over a period of time. So, but yes, this is probably wooded, very, or brush.
So this is kinda useful up in front here, but back there, it's pretty...
Past homograph difficulties, for sure.
Trying to find my house. My house is...
Down, left, left, left.
There's the barn. No, that's... So that access is up towards...
Yeah, actually, Mr. Fuller's located here, the Newman property is here.
Fields?
The field is here, and there's, there's actually an overgrown area right here between that one and, I can't think of their name, I have a face, but I can't think of it.
Jerome.
Jerome, correct. So, I just thought that would be helpful.
Yeah, very, thank you. Still a little long.
So basically, Mike, I don't think that the city council has to take, has to take action this evening on this proposal, but I, you know, I think that maybe at the next meeting, you know, this board really should, you know, obviously, Joe's done a lot of work here, you know, and had Roland in, trying to get the city council to understand the operations of the pool. As we all know, the pool, it doesn't make money. It's, it does lose money, but, you know, obviously, the Graded School District, they are going to dissolve on June 30th. So I think at the next meeting, I think the council is gonna need to pass some form of a motion to respond back to the Graded School District.
And I was informed by Cheryl Breitman that their, this new district is gonna absorb that...
The debt, that's what it says here, assigned to the Virgin's Union Elementary School swimming pool fund in interest $10,283 for the one year. So that is, 'cause I can tell you that, you know, I have, you know, suggested that the Virgin's Graded School District continue for an additional month. You know, I think the voters could approve that. Obviously, the superintendent does not want the Graded School District to continue to be on June 30th. So he obviously is trying to come up with a strategy so that it indeed does dissolve on June 30th. So the debt load is one of the problems. And as you can see here, the Union Elementary School, their budget will accommodate that payment. There's a little later in the letter makes reference to a request that, that if the city were to take over the operation of the pool, that we extend similar rates to their residents. Apparently, there is a differential in rates for folks, for family passes for those that are residents of Virgin's and compared to those that are outside of Virgin's. And that's because we allocate money from the watershed money to, in essence, subsidize the pool operations. As you can see, under the deficit, the, they're still not sure exactly how that works. You know, the law certainly could be clearer, I think I mentioned that at the last meeting, that it says that the operations goes to the union district. And I think they're still trying to figure out who that is. And so you can see that that is still yet to be determined. But, you know, one of the things that's crystal clear to me, that it says union district, it certainly doesn't say municipality. So I think it's gotta land in somebody's budget other than ours. If it's a surplus, though, it'd be great if it suddenly turned into a surplus because if there was, that was my original hope, that there was a surplus, and that could provide some possible seed money for the pool. But, you know, based on that sentence there, doesn't appear to be any projected surplus, so... And as I mentioned earlier, it speaks to a request. This is not, this is not a demand, but a request that in light of the bond going to the Union Elementary budget, therefore being shared to some degree by Penn and Walt, and they were looking for some consideration. But again, it's not a, it's not a demand, it's a request. So that's all I have on that, Mike. I just think that that should, in essence, be an action item at the next meeting.
Okay, we'll put it on the next agenda and come prepared to take action on that. If there's anything, anybody else needs for information, either through Joe about the pool, please contact Joe directly and give him time, ample time to research it so we can keep it rolling or whoever else we need to get the information from. Item number C, we've already addressed, so we're gonna go right to item number seven. City managers' report.
Just five items. One is all of one day early. We did receive the audit, and that's in front of you. And what I'd like to do is set time aside at our next meeting. I did meet with a local board, or at least two of the three members of the, our local board of auditors, Henry Broughton, Ed Nell. Hoover Morris did not make at the meeting, I know his health isn't that good. But I did do a complete report for both Henry and Ed, and I would be happy to do a similar report next month to go over, you know, in essence, some of the high points. If there's one number in there that we certainly were all watching at the time that we set the tax rate was relative to what our fund balance was going to be. And it ended up that our general fund, fund balance was some $82,000 and some change. I wish I, if I had the thing, I could tell you, but it was over $82,000. We, I think we projected that to be in the vicinity of 75, and we used 25,000 to offset the tax rate. So obviously, that number moved in the right direction. We ended up in a little better shape. The other number I'll just mention, say, and save for the session for the next meeting, is that the sewer fund, last year, we finally got in the, got in the black by, with a, the prior audit showed a surplus of $24,000, and that indeed did grow to $59,000. So it does show that the sewer fund is back on its feet, and so it's just good to see that that fund is not in red. And I'll speak about other details. Once you've had an opportunity to review it and you may have some questions, I can talk a little bit further next, next meeting. Next item, grants related. We do intend to put in at least a intent to apply relative to the next phase of our downtown streetscape project. It was about a year ago that we engaged Norm LeBaff to do the design of streetscape around Shear Cuts, Linda's Apparel, Addison Outfitters, and Around the Corner, including the bus stop area. That design was done. So an intent to apply has to be filed by February 1. I intend to do that. The full application has to go in by March 1. I'm not really, although I am familiar in that I closed out a project for Rennie. I'm not familiar on the front end, but I'm sure Rennie has all the templates on my computer. So I don't have any comparative information. I do know that funding is available. The maximum grant is $75,000. This project that I briefly described to you, based on what I know other similar projects cost, this could be a $150,000 project. It kinda flabbergasted me, but I believe that it could be that expensive, and so therefore, we would be applying for the max. And if we do get that max, then, and if that project did cost $150,000, then half of the 75 would come from property owners, and the other half would need to come from the water tower fund. So we put a little bit of a dent in there, but I do intend to move forward with that next phase. I mean, that, as you all know, that section of sidewalk is not good. So that's the plan, is move on to that next step. Other thing, grant related. Randy wondered about senior housing and where things are at. It was, I think, last November when you all, you had a, had a public hearing, in essence, authorizing Housing Vermont to go after CDBG money, Community Development, the block grant money. And although it was, the project was viewed to be a very good project because the HUD funding, that piece was not secured, the board for the program did not award Housing Vermont, but encouraged them to submit an application for the following round. And they have done so. And the meeting before their board, I believe it's February 9th, it's on my calendar, I'll need to attend that again. I believe that they did secure the other funding, Randy. So, you know, they have received their ACT 250 permit, they've got their local permits. I think this is the final financing piece for this project, and if it gets approved, you know, we are going to see a construction commencement, I would say, sometime this year, of an April or May of 2011 occupancy. I wish it was tomorrow. Relative to more units, no different than the other housing, senior housing project in Virgin's. I, you know, I was working here at the time, and as soon as they built the 24, I was after the developer to build more because, you know, there's a huge waiting list there. So we know that this project isn't going to, isn't going to meet the demand. And I, and I hope that the numbers play out. So as the minute that we, I hope they get 100 applications for the 25 units and fill the 25 units, and that will provide evidence that they need to do another phase on that, on that same site, so...
And they already know our stance on that as well.
Right.
I do have a question. The CBG money...
CDBG, yeah.
Is that gonna be money gonna be paid back to the city of Virgin's?
Yes, the way that it's set up now, unlike the Maynard building, you know, when the city, I think it's called the sub-grant, is what they call it, that, 100% of that grant went in the form of a loan to that organization, which was paid back, and it goes into a revolving loan fund. Only 50% comes back now. So let's say this grant is, this $500,000, half of that would come back to us. So they just changed the rules. Well, I think what, you know, what they're doing, obviously, is instead of having it all come to us, what they do is have half of it go back to the state, and it gets put into their POP to be used for other, for other projects, so...
So that we're, and they'll do that over each year, they'll make a deposit, or...
You know, I don't, you know, the other one had this coffee can approach, you know, where once their reserves were full, then they would pay us some money. This is on the Maynard one. You know, I have no idea how this would be structured, whether or not it would be structured similar to that, or whether or not it would start, you know, monthly payments right out of the gate. I really don't know, and it's, it's early, it's just premature for them to have that.
Be able to then lend that out as startup capital for people.
Right, right. Two other things, just wanna let you know, we are, we are down to only 10 delinquent taxpayers out of 929. And the only delinquent taxes owed are for the 2008 taxes. I've collected anything that was owed in 2005 and in 2006 and 2007, they're all collected. So again, 2008, I'm down to 10 taxpayers, and I think five of them are less than $200. I think one of them's $5.60. So basically, we're down to literally a handful of delinquent taxes. There are two people that are avoiding me, not a good idea. So there will be a couple of tax sales that will be appearing in the paper here soon. So I just wanted to alert, alert you to that. We'll have to have a day reserve for you, Mike. I mean, I know one of them, one of them has a mortgage, so I'm sure that the mortgage company will pick that up on the tab. The other one does, I do not believe, has a mortgage. So it's very possible that that could, could go to sale. Lastly, Mike asked me to hand out to you, it's something that Marguerite Senical put together. There's a community calendar which shows the various events that, you know, the Addison County Chamber of Commerce, more particularly, and more specifically, Marguerite Senical will be coordinating for us for 2010. So I just wanted you to get that on your refrigerators. That's all I have, Mike.
Okay. Okay. And as, uh, on Marguerite's behalf, I will let you know, we are looking for volunteers. Some people are getting tired, and old. Okay, thanks Mel, um, new business, appointment of, uh, Fire Department Capital Equipment Committee, Melvin.
Yeah, I gave, uh, obviously, the money from, uh, that was rolled to the city from Ray, we've had for some years now, the, the committee, there was a resolution passed a number of years ago, but the, you know, you know, at first, obviously, there really wasn't any need for the committee to meet until the, until the fund, uh, earned some money, and it actually has earned some money, some, you know, thirty thousand dollars or so, uh, so what I'd like to do, uh, I have tentatively scheduled a meeting of this group for February twenty-third, as indicated in my, in my memo, so I would, uh, recommend that, um, and, and I, and I will come back with a minor, some minor amendments to this res, to this resolution, I wanna, um, put a little structure into the, into the resolution, and, um, I'll give you one example, is it, is the resolution calls for me, as a city manager, to appoint an area resident, uh, the person that I've selected is Joan Devine, I, I really think that the treasurer ought to be on this committee, so the, the structure of this thing, you know, I would suggest that we make a change, make some changes to this, so it's very possible that the members of this committee are all predetermined based on their position, so it's, it's, uh, instead of having to go find somebody to sit on this committee, uh, they're on it due to their, due to their position, except for one member, which, uh, prior to me making this recommendation, Mike, I need, I need, I do need a volunteer from this board. Okay, and I think Ziggy, you, you volunteered a year and a half ago, and of course, they never met, so you are gonna, you know, we are gonna meet.
Thank you.
So, with Zig's, uh, volunteering, I would recommend that the council confirm the following to this committee, Jim Brewer, Jim Larrel, Chris Dion, Joan Devine, Bill Scott, who is, uh, the administrator of Ray's estate, myself, and Ziggy Comall.
I'd ask for a motion to confirm the appoint, please.
Second.
Open for discussion.
Who did first?
David, and somebody over here did.
Lo.
Lo did, second. Open for discussion, hearing none, all of your favor?
Aye.
Polls, so carried. And now, we're gonna find ourselves a constable.
Yes, we are, actually, eight B, uh, I apologize for this, I, I really was not aware that, uh, that our charter in state law requires all municipalities to have a constable, regardless of whether or not they have a police department or not, um, and, uh, obviously, we have a police, we don't, we, we aren't gonna appoint constables to come, to compete with our police officers, but one of the things that a constable can do, if duly appointed and duly sworn into the office that a police officer can't do, is serve civil papers, and, uh, and it's not as though, uh, I'm looking for George Merkel to compete with Jimmy Coons' operation at the, at the sheriff's office, but, you know, it is part, number one, by our charter, we are required to appoint a constable, uh, but also, on occasion, there are civil papers that do need to be served in this community, and it might be more convenient for, for us to have somebody locally to, uh, to have that authority, so I, I would recommend that the council, this is not my appointment, this is your appointment, I, but I would recommend that the council appoint, uh, George Merkel as the constable for the city of Virgens.
Ask for a motion for, uh, the city council to appoint George Merkel as our, uh, yeah.
City constable.
City constable.
I made a second motion.
Second.
Actually, Chris had her finger up before you, so Chris made the second.
And that, just, just, uh, just let you know, that, that position is, that appointment is, is in the same paragraph, uh, where, of Joan's position, my position, so it's something that needs to occur as a part of the annual appointments at the first meeting of the fiscal year, in July.
So, you've, uh, heard a motion in a second, open for discussion?
Yeah, you did talk to George, that is.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It actually came to my attention, George and I learned about this at the same time, we went, we went to a meeting in Montpelier, and we were, we were advised that we weren't following the law, so, well, we'll fix that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Polls, so carried. Before we go to item number C, uh, Joan handed me, she handed me two pieces of paper, they're the same thing.
Oh.
Do you need, you just need, yeah, they're the same, identical, the same thing.
Those are the same thing.
Those are the same thing.
Neither one does the signature, babe?
No, I don't think so.
Are you on a warrant?
No, we're on, we're on, we're on that.
In case someone wanted a copy right there.
Okay, um, we have a request for malt liquor, uh, license at the, the place was the Opera House, it's Valentine's Dance, uh, February thirteenth, uh, two thousand and ten, hours is from seven PM to twelve PM, cater is Roland's Place, Old Lantern, Sherlock Vermont. Uh, ask for a motion to approve this?
Lo made second one.
Lo made the second, and I think Joel take the, or made the motion, and Joel take the second, uh, open for discussion, hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Now, we'll move to, and I'm not gonna read these all, everybody has a copy of the warrants, warning for the city meeting, um, I have the original, um, I'd ask for a motion to, uh...
Mike, I wanna talk about articles.
You too.
Just, you know, just to let you all know that we, we do try to follow your direction, uh, I, Joan and I have been talking about this grace period for some time, uh, prior to the last meeting, and we continue to, to talk about this in between our meetings, and I can tell you that Joan and I both, we, we do feel very strongly that we should have a grace period, all right, there's no, there's no question about that, it'll make our lives much easier, uh, and friendlier, uh, but what, you all did instruct staff to, you know, draft an article that provided for a thirty-day grace period, and, uh, Joan does have a amended article out there for thirty days, but, uh, we just, we think, uh, and this is not a table pounder for Joan and, Joan and I, if you all want thirty days, it's o, it's okay with us, but we, uh, we feel that fifteen days, uh, is, I don't wanna say more appropriate, but, you know, I think it makes, it meets the need, uh, it's, the way that it, uh, uh, the way that it would work is that, let's say that we send out our tax bills on the fifteenth of July, with the first installment due on August sixteenth, on August fifteenth, on August sixteenth, what we would do is we would immediately do a late billing and tell people that, that voters approved a grace period, and they can, they can avoid, uh, interest charges by making payment by the first of, you know, fifteen days, however that works, you know, in that, in August, that would be either the thirty-first or the first, however way I wanna count it, uh, but anyway, instead of giving people a full thirty days, uh, the, the other, it really deals with interest, all right, the, the purpose of this really is to give a grace people, grace period for people that forgot, you know, somebody got ill in the family, or, or somebody maybe having a little bit of a tough time, and they need to get their paycheck the following Thursday, I mean, that's what this, this is really about, and so we, we would suggest, uh, that you all, uh, adopt this, uh, as we've drafted for fifteen days, but again, it's not a table pounder for us.
Do, we wanna open that up for discussion, anybody get any heartburn with that, fifteen adequate, if you're comfortable with that?
'Cause that's, basically meets the needs where people are like, oh my God, I forgot all about my taxes, they'll run right up and pay it, or they happen to have a wedding going on that weekend, of course, tax is the last thing on their mind, they forget it, they'll, then they get a notice in the mail, they'll come right up and pay it, and, and they do do it when we do the billing now, but in the meantime, they're having to pay that interest fee.
Angry.
Where, and, and they do get pretty frustrated, it's like, I, oh, well, like...
You just had one.
Mr. Yan, you know, all my life, I've never been late, I'm late once, and boom, you, you know, and you don't ever give me a discount when I pay way early, but, so this way, it will eliminate, so they don't feel like we're just gouging them, but you need to...
This is all for quarter, including May.
And every sewer bill.
And sewer assessments.
Sewer assessments, too.
Yep, all billing.
I, I think your thirty days, people would end up, get to a point of, to abuse it.
Using it as an extension.
Absolutely.
You know, a fifteen day is truly an oversight, they run right in with it, and, oh, thanks, I'm so glad I didn't have to pay.
Okay.
Can I just, um, ask about wanting, who is the Addison County Reader, I've never seen that on there before.
That's new this year, that, that's a program out of Middlebury, and, um, I actually signed my grandkids up, I ran into it two years ago, they provide a book, once a month, to every kid in Addison County that signs up to that, that are five years and younger, is to encourage reading with young children, and I meant to ask my daughter now if he ever got me.
Is that connected with Dolly Parton?
Yes, that's, it's that same...
Dolly Parton is part of this program.
Yeah.
She, she has a, she supports that, that's very good.
Yeah. So they're a new petitioner this year, um, two that didn't come were Community Health Services of Addison County, we didn't hear from them this year, nor did we hear from the Northern Vermont chapter of the American Red Cross, but new petitioned articles were the Parent-Child Center, which we have had on there in the past, but they weren't there last year, the Addison County Reader, the Girls and Boys Club, weren't there last year, they have been there in the past, they're back this year, and the Open Door Clinic is new this year, so, the total requests are up by fifty-six-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars over last year's totals.
Okay, so what is the total of this, Mel?
I, I don't...
Um, this year, it's thirty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars, last year, it was twenty-five-thousand-one-fifty-five.
Now, they don't always collect all this money, either.
The majority do, like, you can look at, in, in your budget and see which ones haven't, um, but the majority do.
Yeah, the contract requires them to file a report within eleven months, used to be ninety days or whatever, so that's, that's certainly kinder and gentler, uh, so we really don't know, any, we, we cannot confirm non-reporting until eleven months in the fiscal year.
Until Jul, June one.
Right.
They have until June one, all the people we approved last year, they have, the year before, they have until June one, they're in their contract year, and then they have till June one of the following year to report it, so it's a, it's a process.
We need a motion?
I do need a motion.
I'd ask for a motion to approve the warning for the annual city meeting, March first, two thousand and ten.
Joe, you did?
We did, I didn't think we got out there, 'cause it started open discussion, Joe made it, Ziggy seconded it, and he did more discussion or questions. Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Polls, this requires our signature people, so, everyone has to sign, let me sign, and then I'll pass it.
And we'll put it in the annual report tomorrow, and send it to the press.
While that's going around, very nice, uh, thank you card from, uh, Merle Jackman and the girls, uh, on everything that was done, uh, for Ralph's funeral service, and the flowers that she received, so. This year, um, we dedicated the report to two people, Ralph Jackman and Les Shawnplain. Um, it'll go in, excuse me, it'll go into detail in the report, I've written an article, so, I will make sure that, uh, Merle gets a copy and Les gets a copy. Um, I wanna make sure that the citizens realize, and anybody that serves on this, uh, council, if they want to have any sort of display set up, uh, I know the Energy is talking about it, I know Addison County Solid Waste, uh, Cheryl said something about it, uh, for the city meeting, I need to know ASAP, so we can make sure that we provide space, uh, we're going to do, excuse me, the dessert social again, starting at six forty-five to seven fifteen, we want everybody to come, enjoy, socialize with their neighbors and friends, and make sure everybody brings a dessert to share. Um, on another note, it, it's, it's kinda sad, uh, but the circumstances, uh, that, uh, Scott is stepping down, uh, from president of the Chamber of Commerce, uh, we do wanna thank him for all his hard efforts over the years that he has served. Just to let you know, the City Voice will be coming out prior to town meeting, uh, Joe has written a couple of nice articles, there's many more that are gonna be in there, uh, that'll be going around. We've got a quote, uh, Marguerite's got a quote for lighting the falls, uh, it's slightly higher than last year, uh, and that's based on some more high-intense lights to do a, a little bit better job, uh, right now, we gotta figure out, she's applying for some funds to see if she can get some money, uh, out of a business to, uh, pay for that, so. Um, again, I mentioned about the, uh, interest in the, uh, Energy Committee, um, so be, be thinking about that, uh, February twenty-fourth is local government day in the legislature, so I don't know if you plan on going?
I do, yeah.
I'd, I'd like to go, again, this year, I don't know if we're limited, um...
I don't think so.
No, we, we did that last year.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it, it, it is an opportunity to go see how, uh, state government works, and, and sit in on some committees, and maybe even, uh, Mel, get another chance to testify again this year?
Yeah.
Don't know, but it's, it's, it's interesting, um, and I'm not sure if there's a limit, but if, if there is, I can, I can back off, but I, I definitely would like to go, but can change. Um, our next meeting is February ninth, here at the fire station, so, I believe that's...
Mel, you will not be in it, then?
I, I leave on the thirteenth, so no, I'm, but your schedule, your normal schedule is absolutely fine, I, uh, I'm not sure about your agenda for the twenty, whatever, the twenty-third, but we'll, we'll get it to you, we'll figure it out, right, Joe?
Yeah.
Ziggy?
Mel?
Yes.
I've had a couple of people call me.
And then I had somebody approach me at Shaw's, when I first about it, do you know anything about these solar panels they're possibly talking about outside you?
Uh, yes, I do, uh, obviously, there's the, the piece of land, the fifteen-acre piece, there was an article, I think, in the, in the Independent, uh, on the so-called Pomelo piece, um, as I understand it, you know, Ernie, uh, Ernie Pomelo, or an affiliate of Pomelo Real Estate, uh, won a lottery, if you will, uh, what, I think, like, ten demonstration projects across the country, something like that?
Yeah, ten or twelve.
Right, so it's to put a, in essence, a solar panel field, if you will, on, on that parcel, it, uh, it does require, uh, it's called an Act Two-Forty-Eight permit, it's through the Public Service Board, so they don't go through Ferrisburg zoning, it's, obviously, it's a piece of land in Ferrisburg, uh, so they don't go through the zoning board of adjustment in Ferrisburg, it's like Valco, they get their permit, they get their permit directly from the Public Service Board, so, it's my understanding that there will be, um, you know, there's a process, no different than an Act Two-Fifty permit, so there'll be, uh, public hearings, uh, on that, uh, the proposal, you know, the, I do have a copy of the, of, uh, I don't wanna call it a brochure, I don't wanna call it their proposal either, but there, there, Ernie dropped off a couple of months ago, something that they had put together that shows what this thing, uh, you know, might look like, uh, and, and what it does, there's, there's actually an education component to this, it not only generates electricity, but there's a, there's a demonstration area, there's a screen that really, that will show what this, uh, how much energy...
Kiosk.
Yeah, kiosk is a better word, that'll, that shows what it is, uh, what the facility is generating.
That's right, Route Seven.
It's between the high school and Route Seven.
All fifteen acre, six acres, about half of it.
Half of it?
Yeah, it's on my desk, I'm happy to, I could've, I could've brought it.
Like I said, I've had people approach me, and at the time, I had to go grab a, in, that's an independent, so I don't know what they got.
It's a sea of solar, solar panels, it's a literal sea of solar panels, it's, uh...
Isn't there another project proposed in New Haven, too?
It's not, it's supposed to be not, getting up a lot of wear, 'cause they want to absorb the sun.
Mm-hmm.
Takes up about sixty percent of the parcel, would you say, uh?
A little less than that.
Okay.
Well, someone made a comment about the gateway of jazz, I said, well, it's in Ferrisburg. What could I say?
Well, it's pretty much recent by the previous, you know, from, at least from Monk and Rose.
Well, that's it, nobody's seen it or seen it all.
Well, I mean, obviously, as you come down the hill from the south, uh, you know... Well, I mean, obviously as you come down the hill from the south, uh, you know, you're, you're gonna see it.
Anything, that's a good.
And, and this, uh, kiosk will, uh, it's just dumping power back into the grid, uh, it will tell you what it's producing then, at that point, and how much it has done over the period since it's been installed, so there's, there's pieces of information, it's, it's more of an education, uh, than really.
High school, please.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, and nobody's gonna really benefit from it other than the electric company, cause they're, you know, they're getting the power off it, so.
Not gonna use any sewer.
No sewer, no sewer, no water, just a lot of sun and hopefully we have a lot of that this year, but that's not it. Um, any other things to bring brought before this meeting, if not, ask for adjournment?
Make some motion?
Second.
LoL, Ziggy, all of those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oh, thank you. Uh, this is wrong, mine goes home. Everyone on the line, everyone.